States of America and through the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Does anybody have any changes to the order of the agenda that they want to bring forward?
I move for approval of the order of the agenda.
Vote.
And the motion passes 7-0 except Commissioner Reinhardt, I don't have your vote.
Oh, I'm on the wrong button.
Oh.
Is that me?
Okay, thank you.
All right. You'd think I'd know that one by now.
I move for approval of the minutes of the August 6, 2009 meeting.
Second.
If we're all ready enough, there's discussion, we can vote.
And that motion passes with Commissioners Tim's and Chilvers abstaining.
At this time, we normally hold the public forum for anyone wishing to speak on a topic not appearing on the agenda, but we don't appear to have anybody present to speak on that, so we'll move on to public hearing for case number Z 0A 0903, Anordinance Amending Chapter 26 Concerning Parking Regulations. Do we have a staff report?
Yes, thank you. Ken Johnston with the Community Development Department. You've heard this before at a study session, but I'm still going to, for the benefit of the viewing audience, go through a relatively detailed PowerPoint that goes through the high points of the proposed ordinance. This is a comprehensive rewrite repeal and reenactment of Chapter 26 501 regarding off-street parking and loading. Going to hit a little background on some of the issues that led us to propose these amendments to the zoning code, certainly an overview of the details of the ordinance, and then welcome your questions and comments. This is one of the projects that was on our short-term list of zoning code amendments, part of that broader project of amending our zoning code to be more open for business and streamlining some of our development approval processes. We discussed it in more detail with the Planning Commission at a study session back in April, April 16th. In real general terms, we feel like some of our parking regulations can present obstacles for development or, more importantly, redevelopment. To some extent, our parking regulations, like many cities' parking regulations, are really designed for new development, for new construction, new site improvements. As a community, we're really faced more with reuse of existing sites and redevelopment on challenging infill lots, so we think our parking regulations can be more fine-tuned and tailored to those types of development situations. As I mentioned, it is a full repeal and reenactment of Section 26 501. There's a whole new applicability section, there's a new section on shared parking, there's a new section on parking reductions, so specific allowances that allow property owners' developments to reduce their parking requirements, new requirements regarding bicycle parking, and then in general, we're just trying to improve kind of the usability of the document. So to go through an overview of some of these changes, there is a purpose statement that's new that spells out some of those intentions that I already mentioned in terms of trying to achieve the right balance in the amount of parking and being sensitive to the development context that we operate in, which is, again, one that often deals with reuse and redevelopment. The applicability section better defines when different parking requirements are triggered, whether it be the provision of the parking spaces themselves or when different design requirements are triggered. It recognizes that for new development, of course, full compliance would be required unless an exception would be granted through a Planning Commissioner or City Council approval process, but then makes some more flexible allowances for expansions to existing properties or changes of use to existing properties. Specifically in regards to changes of use, it requires less than full compliance with the current parking standards by using a 75 percent factor when determining the new parking requirement for the change in use. We think this gives a little more flexibility in terms of reusing buildings for new purposes, but also recognizing that we still do care about getting a sufficient amount of parking. This is illustrating one of the charts that's in the proposed ordinance. This one, again, specifically in regards to the expansion and how that methodology is calculated. So both illustrates the fact that we're trying to use a more tables and graphics to illustrate the requirements, but then also gives this example of if you were to add on to an existing building, how the requirements that we are proposing would not be as stringent as a full compliance situation because it's recognizing that it's not new development. Shared parking, another topic that we're trying to encourage, again, not to be too repetitive, but when you look at some of our commercial corridors, 38th Avenue, Wadsworth, Kipling, 44th, where we're trying to encourage revitalization and reuse. In some cases, you may have a great reuse for a building, but you may not have an ability to provide sufficient parking for that new use on that lot, so we want to provide reasonable provisions where you can, you know, go to your property next door or the next door beyond that, if it's within that 300-feet requirement, and negotiate a shared parking agreement. We are not allowing that the parking be across a collector or arterial roadway for pedestrian safety, and we are requiring that you have direct pedestrian access between the shared parking lot and the use in question. Parking reductions is another topic that is a new topic for the new ordinance. There are certain byright deductions that could go up to a 25 percent reduction. There's review criteria, there's a provision that spillover parking has to be addressed, traffic circulation has to be addressed, and we reserve the right to require a traffic study to look more carefully at some of the trip generation rates that might be associated with the types of uses that are being proposed. Examples of some of the instances that would create an eligibility for parking reduction, proximity to transit, whether that be a fixed transit station such as the city will be receiving as part of the Gold Line commuter rail expansion on the north part of town, that's Ward Road and 50th, but also for fixed, for bus transit if it meets certain headway requirements, and I'd have to check the ordinance for sure, but I believe it's peak hour 15-minute headways, so the bus has to be a relatively frequent bus in order to be eligible for that transit, bus transit reduction. Also allowing reductions for providing bicycle, motorcycle, and/or scooter parking, and also as an incentive to encourage structured parking from an urban design perspective and recognizing that that's an expensive proposition, that is another example of an eligible reduction. There is an administrative approval process for that, which is something we're trying to encourage with the appropriate criteria that, again, ensure that there are no significant spillover impacts that would unduly burden the on-street parking in some situations or lead to a concern with spillover parking on an adjacent property. Parking ratios, we haven't proposed to do a whole lot with. We did take a careful look, we surveyed, I think, 11 other jurisdictions to compare our parking ratios to those jurisdictions. We also did some more national research in terms of looking at some of the planning literature to compare our ratios. In general, we feel like ours are fairly consistent. We are proposing two reductions, one for eating and drinking establishments, we're proposing to reduce that requirement from one per 75, one space per 75 square feet to one space per 100 square feet. We've also proposed that for medical office uses, that our standard is on, was on the, is currently on the high end at one per 150, and we're proposing to change that to one space per 200 square feet of floor area. Certainly be glad to talk about that more. I think we included a little bit of commentary in your packet, just discussing the fact that we do believe that medical office is a real opportunity for the community, opportunity to attract relatively high-paying jobs and capitalize on the great asset that we have in Exempla Hospital, and there is a, they have stated that there is a desire in that hospital community for additional medical office space in Wheat Ridge that's a spillover, a good spillover from Exempla, so hoping that that reduction in parking requirement would maybe be an incentive for people to do more of that type of development. I would also note that we haven't established maximum, or proposed maximum, requirements, which is something that we talked about with the commission at the study session back in April. You felt, and I think we agree, that the community probably isn't ready to do that, given that we still are a relatively auto-oriented community, so there's nothing stopping property owners from providing more parking than our minimum standards. Bicycle parking is another thing that we wanted to encourage in this ordinance and require in certain instances where we think it makes sense. So it'd be mandatory for land uses that are close to transit or bicycle routes, and there is a reduction, so there's an incentive for, in the amount of vehicle parking that is required when you are providing bike parking. Already mentioned that some, in the area of outstanding policy questions, that maximum parking is something that, based on previous direction, we've not included, so that section has been removed from the proposed ordinance. We also had had some discussion of whether there should be an on-street credit, and that currently is not included either. There's, currently in our, in our city, there just isn't a lot of on-street parking, particularly in relation to commercial uses, so it's hard, there wouldn't be a lot of applicability for on-street credit. I would note that the existing code already has one, one area where we, in some way, give credit for on-street parking, and that is proposed to stay, and that's in residential districts. In residential districts where the streets don't accommodate on-street parking, the parking per unit is four, off-street spaces per unit. If there is on-street parking, it's reduced to two, so that provision would stay. There had been some discussion of whether additional landscaping should be required, whether, just as a general design recommendation, whether there was a feeling that we should have more landscaping in our parking lots, and then also, it was also proposed as another basis for granting a parking reduction. I think the Planning Commission direction at the study session was that there wasn't really a good relationship between reducing parking and adding landscaping, so that is currently not included in the proposed ordinance. And then one additional provision that has been provided, that has been added to the current ordinance, is that back-out parking is currently not allowed onto streets or over sidewalks. While we certainly don't think that's a good practice in general when it could be avoided, we also realize that on some of our more smaller infill sites, again, such as on 38th Avenue and 44th Avenue, that there may be instances where that type of a back-out parking movement could be addressed safely and could be the only option, really, for providing parking in those situations, and we'd not want that to become an obstacle to redevelopment if it could be done safely. And with that, I would be glad to entertain questions.
Anyone want to, want to start, anybody?
All right, Ken. As I said, I apologize, I don't know if I missed these things the first time through or they weren't there or what, but I do have several questions. Starting out, could you clarify for me, we talked about this a little bit earlier, what happens when two businesses enter into an agreement over shared parking? The way it's currently written, should either of those parties become interested in ending that relationship, there's no way for them to do that. The only way to get out of that relationship currently is for the city to do it. Can you address the concerns that the business owners may have in those shared parking agreements? Are we going to put ourselves in a position where nobody wants to sign a shared agreement because it may actually make their business more difficult to sell down the road because this has been entered on, it's been attached to their deed, and they have to abide by it?
Yeah, that's a great question. We do think it's important that the city have a role in allowing anyone out of a shared parking agreement. We've essentially used the shared parking as a, as a means of getting around the standard requirement of simply providing it on your own site. So we need to ensure, from the city's perspective, that if property owners desired to get out of the shared parking agreement, that they had another way of providing the appropriate amount of parking, so we'd want to have a review role there, an ability to say no if they didn't have an alternative backup plan that met our requirements. But I recognize the fear factor, and I think, from a practical perspective, I would hope that myself or someone in my shoes in the future would certainly entertain requests from property owners to get out of a shared parking agreement, but it may be worthy of actually noting that in the ordinance, that a request to initiate removal of a shared parking agreement could be initiated by one or both property owners.
Owners and go through you.
Right, and then just put us in that review mode, but make it clear that it's not a unilateral, you know, you can't even start the discussion unless I decide to, sort of thing.
Right, okay.
Can I, can we stand?
Yep, stay on that one.
I actually, I'm, I actually think I fall down on the other side. John, on this issue, why would we position ourselves to want to be between two private contracting parties?
I don't think that we necessarily want to, I mean, my point was just that there's no way for those property owners to get out of that agreement, the way the ordinance is currently written, and so I was looking for some way for the property owners to get out of that agreement. I mean, basically, the way it's written now, that agreement is, is attached to the property, it's in effect in perpetuity unless the city decides to back out of it.
It's, in simplest form, it's a three-way agreement, and it gets recorded with the county, so it would show up as an encumbrance in the county records. The city would be one party and presumably two, there could be more than that in terms of the private side of things, so I think, as a practical legal matter, all the parties would have to agree to somehow disassemble that shared parking agreement, but I think the intent of Commissioner Dwyer is simply to say that the current language seems to maybe suggest to some that only the city is the one making that final decision, as opposed to it being a three-way conversation that could be at least initiated by any one of those parties.
I guess, I would hate to be in a situation, and I'm not sure where this goes in terms of what we're doing tonight, but I'd hate to be in a situation where I had a joint parking agreement, and that was a recorded document, that I had a right to rely on, and the city and the adjoining business, without my consent, took away my rights under that agreement. I'm a little unclear, and this is essentially an agreed-to contract and encumbrance on the property, why would the, why would I be okay with the city and my neighbor deciding what my parking rights are against my will? I don't know where that takes this conversation, but, I mean.
Well, if you didn't have something like this, then you, I mean, people could do an agreement to get reduction in parking and then abolish that agreement after the project's done, and then it's a way around the parking requirements without actually, so I would think you'd have to have some sort of provision like this in there, otherwise it would get abused.
Right. No, I understand why the city wants to have this done this way, and I agree with it for the reasons that he just elucidated. I am a little bit concerned about the property owners, so we may need, I don't know that we need to add anything to it, but, you know, I did want to clarify how you can get out of that agreement. Section E Standards, Sub D, page 9, Sub 2, it says parking for, we're talking about RVs, and it says that parking for RVs shall be limited, in an RV park, to 30 days. And I was wondering where we came up with that, and it seemed pretty arbitrary, and I just don't, I don't understand the purpose behind that provision.
The RV parking regulations have not been proposed to change, so those, they show up in a little different section than they did in the existing ordinances, but otherwise, those are repeated from the existing code, so I must say I can't speak necessarily to the intent of that limitation.
Can we stay on that same point on RVs before? Do you mind?
Yes, please.
If you go to page 25 of the packet, so the section on, Section 2, Parking of Recreational Vehicles and Trailers, that hasn't been changed either?
That's correct.
Okay, because I drove around my neighborhood, and I don't have enough hands and fingers and toes to tell you how many are in violation, not only of the two, but of the being completely hidden from view behind a six-foot or taller screened, structure or vegetation that completely screens the vehicle. We might have to review this at a later date because the reality is the moving homes that are now parked in people's lots, they're as tall as the houses sometimes, especially in the older sections of Wheat Ridge, so I'm.
We could actually stay right there, I had a question in the same spot, it says that the vehicles, the recreational vehicles or trailers that are going to be parked there have to be less than six feet in height. Now, I don't know of any recreational vehicles that are less than six feet in height, I mean, my SUV is over six feet in height. I'm not quite sure how anybody could possibly comply. It says the vehicle or trailers have to be less than six feet in height.
That's the exemption, though, if they're shorter than six.
Oh, that's the exemption, okay, again, so there would be no exemptions because it can't be.
Well, the definition of, the definition of RV and trailers includes things like boats on trailers, so there could be some, not RVs, but things that meet the definition that they're less than six feet in height.
Okay.
Is there any setback required for higher vehicles like RVs?
Not that I'm aware of.
So they can, they can park a 12-foot RV, 12-foot-high RV right on their property line?
Well, I'm just saying, since we were revamping this, clearly, we'll go, we could go forward with everything, but we should revisit the applicability and the validity of this based on modern-day realities of recreational vehicles, so.
Yeah, you can perhaps guess, I mean, there is some history on the RV regulations in the community, and that's why we, it wasn't really our target in terms of the intent of this ordinance, so we just chose not to really delve into that at all. If we were to delve into that, I think we'd certainly look at our, how we notice this hearing in terms of outreach, more aggressive outreach to the residential community would be important.
Thank you.
Do you think we should enforce the existing regulations, or you think we should be revising these regulations, or you don't know yet?
I.
I mean, that's in your name, but what's your?
I have enough information. I can just tell you that my drive through District 1 found more than 20 in a very short period of time, especially with ranch housing, that they were either taller than the house, they were not screened, there were toys, so recreational vehicle plus a trailer plus a boat, plus possibly like a toy trailer like motorcycles or something, all there, and this is multiple occurrences of it.
Well, then, then this is something, this is an enforcement issue rather than an issue with the ordinance, or?
I'm saying that it needs, I'm saying that if we're reviewing this as a whole, that this should be reviewed at a later date, if there's a concern. If there's no concern and we're going to do this.
I will answer your question, yes, we should either enforce it or revise it, one or the other.
My understanding.
Since this is a repeal, in fact, and a reissuing of the whole section, this would, in fact, regardless of whether this was there before or not, in essence, we're putting it all in anew, so it should, in fact, all be up for our debate and modification. Now, I don't know if you want to actually tackle it, but.
Do we, I suppose we'll have an opportunity down towards the end of this to decide which, if any, of these things we're going to advocate for change. I think it's fair to say there's a general sense that the regulations don't address all the current circumstances in the RV issue, but I don't, we can certainly, anybody who has the appetite for it can tackle it in a motion at the end. Do we have any other topics we'd like to bring up, John?
I just, I have a couple more. In the miscellaneous section, page 23, Section J, Restrictions on the Use of Non-Residential Parking Areas, which basically, I guess, and this is also for L, I think, the real question is of whether or not businesses who are currently not in compliance are going to be grandfathered in, on, on having to pave or, I'm thinking specifically of a business at the end of my block that's an auto body who frequently has cars parked in front of his building on 44th for more than 72 hours, and is he going to be required to somehow find other places to store those vehicles as soon as this ordinance becomes effective?
Yeah, there's a fairly broad grandfather clause in the applicability section.
Okay, yeah, I thought that, I got a little confused on.
And the only caveat to that would be the fact that we have another ordinance that we'll be talking about later this evening regarding residential off-street parking surfacing requirements, and that would, if approved, that would repeal some of that grandfather for the surfacing standard specifically.
That's why I was confused about whether or not he was going to have to immediately find that. And, that's it for me.
Henry?
I have a couple editorial comments, is it too late to change some things? The first one's kind of a general one, and the first, on the top of page 2, I've read A many times, and I don't understand what that means, can somebody explain that?
The intent of that is that a use, we don't want, it's related to Commissioner Dwyer's comments, I mean, it basically says that if you're non-conforming in regards to parking, you can continue and be grandfathered, but you can't get rid of parking that would take you out of compliance.
I don't know if there's a better way to word that, but, again, I read that several times and I didn't understand that, so that's just a comment.
Okay.
Then on bottom of page 15, under surfacing, there's a sentence there that says, shall proper, properly, shall be properly graded for drainage and onsite detention of stormwater or storm runoff. Detention's not always, onsite detention's not always required, and that's covered in a different section, I think that ought to be stricken somehow, because it could get confusing that you're requiring detention in this section when it's covered elsewhere.
I can interject on that, perhaps that and between drainage and onsite should be an or.
It could be detention or retention, or?
Well, that's what I'm getting at, I mean. I mean, this has certain meanings and it gets confusing, and it really doesn't have any purpose in this ordinance, because it's covered in another, you know, you could just say, "Shall properly graded for drainage," and be done with it.
I think that's, that's correct.
If, if you wanted to, you could refer to another section, but I don't...
Yeah, because not all sites, as you point out, require detention, onsite detention.
Then on the next page. The, the last sentence on that, the continuation of that paragraph shows up in, in many places, and in other places it says that, you know, where you have gravel or, I forget the exact wording, but when you have not concrete or asphalt, that you need something to hold it in.
Right.
And here, here it says, uh, it, it doesn't make that, I, I think this wording should be similar to the way it is in other locations, because this says you have to have it even if it's asphalt or concrete. I, I don't want it to be misread to mean that you have to have curb every place, because I don't believe that's the intent.
So do you just want the, the part in parentheses struck? Is that...
Well, just, I, I'd have to find it again elsewhere, but, but you know what I'm talking about.
I do, yeah. You're looking for the consistency in my...
Yeah. I guess I brought this up before and lost, but I feel so strongly about it. On page 17, I'm sorry to hop, Roman numeral three, we're requiring sprinklers, sprinkler, irrigated sprinklers in a, in a semi-arid environment. That's something I don't think we should be doing a lot of. We should allow more, uh, zero scape and that sort of thing, but I guess I lost.
Well, keep in mind, this, that number three, I don't disagree with you, but that number three is under the heading landscaped islands and parking areas. So, it's not advocating you have to have a sprinkler system if it's all concrete. It's just saying, if you have plants there, keep them alive.
Well, we're requiring islands, though, if it's, if it's large enough.
Right.
And then, you know, and, okay, say you have something with 32 spaces, then you have to have an island and you have to bring irrigation to it, and it may be the only irrigation you're required to have in a whole site. It, it doesn't make a lot of sense to me, but...
Ken, on that point, I'm, I agree with Henry, and I'm, I'm wondering if as a minimum it could have the, the additional sentence that says something unless an appropriate zero scape solution were present, uh, zero scape solution were presented and approved by the, by you? I mean, it seems like we ought at least allow for the option. And I would say that we do encourage, we do encourage zero scape as a general matter in our, in our landscape regulations. Uh, I think it becomes a question, and I, I'm not a landscape architect, so I, I don't, there's probably some concern about the viability of any plant in a, in a hot environment like a parking lot, I mean, a particularly hot environment like a parking lot, needing some sort of drip irrigation. It certainly doesn't have to be a sprayhead that's going to, you know, be spilling the sidewalks and things like that and evaporating and wasting water, but, but again, I'm, I'm not, I don't know whether there's some, some plants that could be established, they're certainly going to need water to get established, but after that point could get, get by without irrigation. I'm not asking you to solve the problem, I'm asking to allow for the possibility that somebody else solves it. Yeah, and I, I appreciate that. My only, my only concern would be there is some resistance to putting in irrigation for sometimes just pure financial reasons, and again, not being a landscape architect, I just, these, these landscape islands typically have trees, I mean, that's why they're there, and without some drip irrigation, I'd be concerned that a tree really isn't going to be viable in a landscape island in a parking lot without some drip irrigation. I don't know, but...
I mean, I'm, I'm, go ahead.
Using the term zero scape, to me implies there are plant materials, so if we're clear on that, if we're just going to use gravel or concrete, that's something different. And we can, uh, it's very easy to install irrigation that does not spray anywhere, and you will not even see it. The city uses a subsurface irrigation on their sod along 38th Street, so there's no water hitting the street, and there is cost involved in running an irrigation line under a parking lot, and if that's, that might be the objection right there. But in the big scheme of things, I think we need to do some kind of landscaping around our city. We can't just not have any. Some of our older, run-down shopping centers have nothing, and they're horrible, and they're not what we want in this city. It's not what I want in this city. So, we can't just let people go and have no irrigation, no plants.
I, I completely agree with that, but I, I believe that, I actually agree with both of you, and I don't think those are inconsistent requests necessarily, in terms of this, this language. I mean, I'm working on a site which we, we have a certain amount of this problem, which requires, we're, we're going to have both, actually, is where, where it's going, because we, we have to limit the amount of water we have, there's some environmental liabilities, and there's, uh, there's portions of our site which we're going to have flow into bioswales which absorb and clean the water, and in those portions, places where it's just not appropriate to have irrigation, we're looking at, at solutions. I'm not, again, I'm not asking you to solve the problem, I'm asking you to allow that somebody might without, without, because my, my experience is, is if you have a language like this, there's going to be sitting, somebody sitting at your front desk, Ken, going, "I, I don't care how beautiful and perfect your solution is, it says right here, you're going to do it this way." And I would, I would join Henry and suggest that there, we allow for the possibility of an alternative at the discretion of, and I guess I've talked my way out of this.
So my, my contention is we need to have the town look good. That's what I'm concerned about, and I think that's what you're concerned about, too. And how we arrive at it, there's lots of solutions, but I just don't want to say, "Let's just pave it, pave the whole lot."
Well, I, I completely agree, yeah.
I don't disagree with that either. Next, ready for the next item? On page 21, under miscellaneous, it's B, and I may have lost my place, maybe this has a specific application, but it's, the last sentence says, "Double load of spaces, parking where one vehicle blocks another are considered unusable," so you can't count those. I, I think there's a lot of, you know, duplex in residential places where that's how the parking is, and are you, are you now saying that it's not going to be allowed anymore?
I think I would say that, and I, I think you're right that that certainly is how a lot of residential parking is provided. Um, I think, I don't think we've enforced it that way, but I, I think you're, you're probably correct that we could. So it, it could deserve, this is existing language, but I, I mean, it could deserve a caveat, such as except in single-family and multi, single-family and duplex residential or something like that.
Yeah. And then in the next, the next backout parking, I made a, made a note here, let me see if I can remember. Oh, I just, I just was noting, it says unless an exception has been granted by the Director of Public Works. Uh, that, this is a safety issue, so I hope he doesn't just grant those exceptions without looking at it, but I don't think he would. I think I had one more somewhere here. Oh, page 26, B, rear, side and rear setbacks. It seems to me that the first sentence and the last sentence is just repetitive. I, I don't know why it's repeated that way, maybe there's a reason, but I couldn't figure out why.
I think they're a little different. I'm trying to see if they're consistent. The first sentence, "Recreational vehicles or trailers stored in a side yard need not meet any setback requirement," and then the last sentence, "Recreational vehicles and trailers," so that's the same, but it says less than six feet in height, and "stored in the, the backyard do not need to meet rear and side yard setbacks."
So you're saying you need both of those sentences?
I think so, because I think...
Okay.
In the side yard, it doesn't need to meet any setbacks. In the rear yard, if it's less than six feet in height, it doesn't have to meet...
Okay, I understand now. And then on the, I just noticed one more thing on the last page, number nine appears to be a repeat of number seven. Number seven has to do with stacking spaces, and then number nine has drive-through and vehicle stacking spaces, and they say the same thing as a, a reason that we're saying it twice?
I don't, I don't believe so.
And that's all I have.
Steve?
It's fascinating to what each commissioner kind of picks up on. Just a couple of quick comments here, starting on, I'll start backwards and work forward. On number 20, on page 27, and I know this section you put in the footnotes wasn't changed, but number four, variances to residential parking standards, you need a sentence in there, "Request for variances under this subsection J shall not be charged, the fee of the request is filed by December 31st, 2004." Can you just strike that, since we're obviously past 2004? And that's a, that's just... That was my easy question. And then on page 24, subsections two and three, spacing of vehicle access and curb cuts, I do agree with you overall when we talk about that the, that the majority by far of Wheat Ridge now is going to be infill and redevelopment, and we don't have greenfield development to a large extent like some suburbs, and, and general parking standards typically do well with those greenfield developments, so we have to be a little bit more creative. I would like to see, I'm fine with the regulations in two and three, but I guess I would like to add a little bit of discretion, number like, for example, number four there at the bottom, number D, you said the Public Works Director can reapprove a modification. I guess I would like to apply that to two and three as well, that there may be some situations where maybe the access needs to be closer, that maybe it needs to be 23 feet instead of 25 feet, or the curb cut needs to be nine feet or 25 feet. I guess I'd like to have a little bit of discretion with Public Works rather than automatically jumping that to the Board of Adjustment for a variance, so maybe we could just expand that, Public Works Director, this kind of administrative modification for two and three, if, if other commissioners are okay with that.
I'm sorry, I didn't follow you. Could you just say where you started again?
Uh, this is, this is on page 24, subsection two, spacing of vehicle access, and then number three, curb cut widths, basically just allowing, in specific cases, to have a Public Works Director modification to those standards in, in certain situations, as, in accordance with number four at the bottom, subsection D.
He wants to add that the same D language...
Yeah, yeah, two and three.
I got, I got it now.
Without Ed having to go to the, a Board of Adjustment for a variance on that. Just to encourage flexibility with redevelopment. And then my main question has to do with, and maybe you'll address this as part of the next ordinance, this, this parking lot surfacing, which is found, where was that found here? Oh, page 15 at the bottom, right? So is the, is the next proposed ordinance that we're looking at going to replace all of this? I guess my particular question is this 25 feet, which is what this is, this is saying, right? You only have to pave the first 25 feet except for agricultural lots. I personally don't like that, and so I just want to see if, it seems to be in kind of in conflict with the next ordinance, and so I just wanted, I wanted to see the relationship between the two.
Uh, this is the existing language.
Okay.
We have not changed it in this ordinance, but the, it's not, in, in the next ordinance, it's not proposed to be changed either, so if, to the extent that we could defer that discussion maybe to the next discussion, the next ordinance discussion, that would probably be the appropriate place to discuss that.
And then two other points. Do you feel like your staff is, I mean, do you feel comfortable that your staff can make some of these interpretations and calculations, I guess, with, with some of these shared parkings and so forth like that? I mean, it's, I looked at it and it can be a little complicated, and so I just wanted to make sure that...
It, it is a little complicated, and we've, we've run through a few scenarios in, in some of our staff meetings to kind of get a, a feel for it, and I think, yes, I think we can.
That's all the questions I have right now.
Ken?
I'm holding back to the next one.
Jim?
Well, I, I think, just to follow up on, on the previous comment, I always hate to see the same thing mentioned in two different sections, because then when you change one, it gets lost in the other one. So, maybe, maybe surfacing shouldn't be discussed here and should be just referred to the other section.
The, the intent was to, was to reflect any surfacing changes that get, that get changed through the other, they were just on different tracks, so we tried to just keep them on their different tracks. In the event one or the other...
Oh, okay.
...got sidetracked, we'd still be able to keep the other one moving forward. That was the intent.
Just follow up on that, because we do even, within this surfacing requirement, we have it actually twice in here, right? We have it on the bottom of page 15, and then it's found again on the top of page 24. So even that could potentially be a duplication that, that may be confusing or not caught later on if, if edits are made. So I would maybe encourage the consolidation of, of both of those into one.
Okay. Okay, I think what that, do any other additional issues from anyone? I think what we need to, if, is there any more general open discussion about where we are in the process and what recommendation we'd like to take back to staff as to, or are we, go ahead.
Recreational vehicles, I'll throw myself in here. I know you had not intended to look at this as part of this review, repeal, and et cetera. As it is right now, as written, any neighbor could reasonably complain and, and have his other neighbor, all the 20 that I counted, have a code violation based on, based on the whole, the whole requirement on page 25 regarding parking of recreational vehicles and the exemptions and the locations. And so I'm, I'm having difficulty agreeing with the whole thing when this piece wasn't touched, even though we, we have some critical issues here. And, and the, the main problem is the fact that since we are an older city and, and our residents, many of our residents have been here a while, and they've been able to amass enough discretionary funds to buy toys, recreational vehicles and boats, et cetera, et cetera, and they choose to put them on their property, they're in violation of this code. So I'm, I'm trying to find some equitable way to address this.
Jim?
The council went around and round with this several years ago, and I don't know if any, anything was happily resolved. In most cases, many of my neighbors have code violations that I ignore that because they don't really bother me. And so I think when somebody's RVs get too many, then their neighbor will complain, and then they'll get, action will be taken. So, I guess I don't want to sit here and resolve the whole issue once and for all. So I guess I don't want to sit here and resolve the whole issue once and for all right now.
Can I, can I back us up a step? Because by my count, we have 12 issues that we could potentially make recommendations on. And so I guess I'd like to have a sense as to whether we are going to essentially recommend that we move this forward and then amend the motion with each one of these issues, try and resolve each one of these individually, or is that the path we're on tonight? Or are we going to potentially send the staff back for, to try and clean up the things that concern us? I'd like to know what the sentence of the commissioner is with respect to what recommendation we ought to broadly make here.
Has that already been put on the agenda for a city council meeting?
We have placeholders on an agenda, but it's, it's not, it's not been formally published. We had, we're tracking for the September 14 first reading, but that can be changed.
So I didn't hear anything that was earth shattering in all the, all the 12 items you have or however many. I mean, a lot of them were, were minor or cleanup type stuff. Again, my only concern, and Jim has a good point about letting sleeping dogs lie, so to speak, on the recreational vehicles issue. So I, I just wish we'd address everything at once if we were going to do a whole repeal. But I realize the sensitivity on this, so, but I didn't hear anything earth shattering in anybody's.
So is it the, is it then, would there be a consensus to recommend that he move it forward with a series of identified minor deficiencies in the language? Or are we asking to see it again before we send it to council?
I think, I think we should send it forward with, with these comments and then let them deal with it, Hal. I don't think there's anything in here that, that, that we need to see again.
Is there anybody who disagrees with it? Okay. All right. So that gets us to, are we gonna, are we going to pick through the 11 I wrote down and the other two I probably missed? Or are we going to suggest that we gave Ken enough direction for him to move forward? Does Ken feel he could, has enough of the sense of the commission to move forward? Or would you prefer, do you need us to go through as a group each one of these items and see where we come down?
I'd prefer you gave me conditions. I think that would be a cleaner handoff.
All right. So I have a list, and I'm not going to claim that in the middle. I necessarily caught it all or, or took it through, but I, maybe if we had a motion to, to move the ordinance forward and then a series of amendments.
Conditions?
Of conditions that we would like to put on staff to move it forward. So I need a motion, an initial motion to move forward the ordinance to city council, subject to the conditions. And then we can all add conditions.
Mr. Chairman, I do move to recommend approval of case ZO eight dash O nine oh three, an ordinance repeal and reenacting section 26 dash 501 of the Wheat Ridge Code of Laws pertaining to off-street parking and loading for the following reasons. Proposed ordinance provides a balanced approach to providing the right amount of parking. Proposed ordinance encourages the use of alternative modes of transportation. Proposed ordinance will allow for greater flexibility in the reuse of existing buildings and sites and will encourage revitalization along the city's commercial corridors. And the proposed ordinance implements the goals of the neighborhood revitalization strategy, which has been adopted as an element of the city's comprehensive plan in conjunction with the following additional conditions to be stated.
Second.
Should we, I think we should create the conditions before we vote, is that?
Yes.
Okay. So at the, I'm going to go through what I wrote down and see if anybody feels they need to work on a condition for it. The shared parking agreement?
No. Let's go through that one.
Okay. RVs, do we want to tackle any additional direction on RVs?
No.
We can move that they bring us back an RV later if we want, and then at once we've concluded this issue.
We can do that as a, as a off-topic.
Okay. There was grandfathering language that was in doubt and with respect, I think it was gravel in the driveways. And we have another opportunity to tackle that later, do we not? We're.
Yes, the, the second ordinance you're considering tonight is currently focused just on residential, but it does deal with the surfacing.
Okay. Wording page two, number two.
Paragraph.
Paragraph.
It was A. Page two A.
This is the one that you weren't clear what it meant.
Oh, okay.
Henry was asking if it could be written.
Yeah, I was just asking.
The clarity of language.
Yeah. If, if it's clear to everybody else, then no, we shouldn't add it, but it's still not clear to me, so I think the wording ought to be looked at.
So is, would someone like to make the, do we have to have a motion on each condition that we're asking for?
No. You just, these are all conditions to the original motion.
Okay. So I would, I support Henry that the, that this paragraph ought to be rewritten to match the, if that's the sense of the commission. Okay. So that's, so far you're doing good. You only had one. The language related to surfacing to remove the detention from the language where it's a grade, it's a, was it grading and detention? Was it?
Yeah, section.
Yep.
Page 15.
Yep. Five.
Under five, surfacing.
Right. And we were trying to get consistent with the impervious service language that's in other sections.
Yeah, it's different throughout. I found four different varieties.
Is that enough?
Well, I think there's, there's two issues, striking the, the last phrase, and onsite detention or storm runoff.
Right. Yeah, that's actually the next one I.
Oh, okay.
The, yeah, no, you're right. I modeled the issues and when I put it through there. The first issue was sales or storage should be properly graded for drainage and drop the onsite detention and store of runoff language.
Correct.
Okay. Right. Does anybody believe that irrigation and that the, it is, is worth giving staff alternate direction in the language in the parking lot that requires curbing gutter and irrigation? I was the one that cared the most, and I'm, I think in light of the, I'm willing to let it go in if our landscape we're over here is.
Let it go.
All right. There was a question about usable parking spaces that Henry raised with respect to whether they counted or not if they were impractical towards the requirements and particularly in the residential neighborhoods.
Yeah, allow double loaded spaces in, in one and two family residential areas.
And I think that, oh, that went to whether we were going to give the public works director authority over.
Page 24. Two, three.
As opposed to sending to board of adjustment on two and three I have on my notes.
Two and three gets D.
It would be D.
Right. Right. Okay.
And then?
And then, and then there was another, I have consolidation of surfacing, consolidation of, oh, in the language about park, what you can park on again. Number 11.
So consolidate language on surfacing requirements?
That's right. It was in two different sections. It was page 25, I think, and then back in the front. So we're not commenting on two separate places. All right, what did I miss? I'm sure that wasn't exhausted.
Twenty-seven. Steve brought up the, get rid of the date.
Right.
In section four.
Section four.
Request for variances.
Okay.
And then Steve brought up, I think somebody brought up, it's redundant on 28 and 29, number seven and number nine.
Any other conditions that we, anybody saw that we missed that we would like to put on staff? Okay, we have a motion and a second to move this ordinance forward with the listed conditions. Is there any discussion?
I would just like to say it's our role to nitpick on these ordinances that are moving forward, but in the whole, this is a very, very well crafted ordinance that is being moved forward.
Any, any further discussion before we vote? May I have a vote of members?
Motion passes seven zero.
We are ready for case number ZO eight O nine O five, an ordinance amending chapter 26 regarding off-street parking requirements. Do we have a staff report, any name for the record in?
We do. Ken Johnstone, Community Development Department. I'd be glad to go over this PowerPoint to outline this ordinance as well. So in terms of what I'd like to cover tonight, go over the policy issue that's been raised. This has, again, been discussed several previous occasions with city council study session, including one study session where the planning commission was in attendance, at least some members of the planning commission were in attendance as well. Review our staff recommended code revisions that we certainly hope get at the, the intent of what the, the issues are, and then give you an opportunity to give us additional direction. So the, the issue that's been raised is really, in, in the overall sense, is a need to define a community standard for what surfaces are appropriate to park on in a residential context. Some of the concerns that have been raised by citizens and elected officials are, you know, the presence of too many vehicles that are parked on lawns or dirt, compacted dirt surfaces. There are impacts from that, both aesthetic impacts and because of aesthetic impacts, potential property value impacts, but also real water quality impacts from people tracking dirt and mud onto the public streets, which also leads to higher, higher maintenance costs on the, the street surfaces. The reason why, while we have existing surfacing standards in the code, the reason that we can't enforce those standards is because they, they only apply to new development, substantial changes in use, or substantial alterations. So given that the fact that the bulk of the city residentially is existing and has been existing, that we don't really have an ability legally to enforce the surfacing requirements on existing residential development, which is where the concern has arisen. I want to go through a few visual examples of what we're, to kind of rebuild that consensus as to what we don't think is good and what we maybe do think is good, because that's what we've intended to craft the ordinance around, these kind of visual examples. So starting with what we think are inappropriate surfaces. Weeds, compacted dirt. We've protected the innocent, hopefully. This looks like it's parked on a, on a grass surface. Actually, I think it might be two properties that each have a vehicle parked on a grass surface. This partially parked on at least a semi-concrete driveway, but also partially parked on compacted Looks to be two issues here. There's a, next to the car, there's a area that looks to be used for, for parking, at least at some times, though not in this picture, that again would be compacted dirt. And then the trailer to the right, that's parked just right in the, on the lawn area. Another example of a vehicle parked on a lawn area. And again, these are all residential examples, and that's where the, the ordinance is currently focused, is dealing with this at a, at a residential level. Some sort of a trailer structure, it appears, and again, parked on, on a lawn area. This appears to be somewhat of a junk vehicle, but again, parked on a, on a landscaped area. So this is what we, the next series of slides is really what we think are appropriate surfaces, which is really broader than maybe the current definition of appropriate surfaces, because we are proposing to clarify, in my mind, the definition of a hard surface to include certain compacted gravel or crushed stone materials. Typical concrete driveway, crushed, looks like crushed granite, brick pavers or similar product. Combination here of asphalt as well as some sort of a crushed rock material, again, a crushed, crushed stone material. The direction that we've seen thus far from city council, which is really where this issue arose at an April study session and then at a joint study session on July 6th, where some commission members were present, was, was the short-term recommendation that, that there be no parking in residential front yards on certain unimproved surfaces, including grass and compacted dirt. And then propose that a code, that this type of a code amendment be enforceable in the near term, so that, get rid of this grandfathered issue or obstacle that, that we can enforce a surfacing requirement in the short term. There was a longer term issue that was discussed, and that was really whether, at some point in time, this should be retroactive to all properties, these surfacing standards. The direction we got from, from council at least was that we, we didn't need to do that. We didn't need to make this 100% retroactive on all driveways and off-street parking surfaces for all existing residential development. So with that, we are proposing the ordinance, and I have just four kind of summary points of what the ordinance is intended to do. Effective date would be August 31st, and it would make it unlawful to park vehicles in residential districts on the following surfaces. Landscaping, and we currently define that in our code as areas such as turf, ground cover, certain rock surfaces with shrubs, but we define that in our current code in section 26 502. Weeds, another unacceptable surface, and compacted dirt. Now, in parentheses there, we say with the exception of existing driveways. We've accepted existing driveways. The feeling on that is that existing driveways that might not meet these standards, it could be onerous to impose a requirement that someone can't use their existing driveway to get to their garage because it doesn't meet this new surfacing standard. Those driveways in some instances could be hundreds of, hundreds of feet long, and we'd be asking for, for an individual who's had that in existence for some period of time to potentially go to some significant expense. We're defining two things. We're defining residential driveways and we're defining hard surfaces. We're defining residential driveways that they're generally not greater than two feet wider than the garage door on both sides. And again, to go back to my, my previous point, by defining driveways, we allow these existing driveways, whether they're used for parking or simply as an access to a garage or other off-street parking space, to not be subject to the new parking requirements, parking surfacing requirements. The third point in the ordinance is that we're defining hard surface. Hard surface has previously been referenced in the code in regards to off-street parking and loading surfaces, but it was never clearly defined. It was inferred by some language in the code that's been referenced in the, in the discussion about the previous ordinance, that it could be something less than concrete or asphalt because there's language that says it has to be contained by concrete curbs or railroad ties. So there was a suggestion that there was a lesser standard, but it was never defined. So what we're doing in this ordinance is proposing to define what that hard surface is. And we're defining it to include compacted gravel, compacted crushed stone, recycled asphalt, open and closed pavers and other similar materials. This definition really borrows from the existing definition that's in, that is in the RV section of the parking regulations, which did define a standard for these lesser materials such as compacted gravel and compacted stone. So we're, we're trying to be consistent with some language that was already on the books, but just apply it in a broader way. but just apply it in a broader way. The, and then to follow up on that, in defining this new hard surface requirement, we're proposing to maintain the existing standard, which is that the, the first 25 feet of the driveway, as it connects out to the street surface, must be asphalt or concrete, but that the, the balance of the driveway or off-street parking surface can be, can meet this new definition of hard surface, which includes the compacted gravel and the other materials that I've, that I've already mentioned. So that's really the, the heart of the, the ordinance, I know it's a little bit...
Back up to the last slide.
Sure.
Okay, thank you. I just misread something right as it flipped, that's all, thank you.
So with that, again, I'd be glad to entertain questions.
There seem to be a lot of exceptions for the hard surface requirements, particularly on the width of the driveways. Am I understanding that correctly, that you are allowing, or this would allow, a lot of vehicle parking actually on something other than these hard surfaces?
The, the only exception would be for existing driveways. So if it, if it's an existing driveway that provides access to garage or another off-street parking area, that wouldn't, and if that material was not up to the current, the new definition of hard surface, those would be allowed to remain, and that's the only exception.
But didn't you say that the driveways that extended two feet beyond the garage doors would not be considered driveways?
Yes.
And also?
Yes.
But vehicle parking would still be allowed in those areas?
In the two feet, on either side of the garage door?
No, past the two feet.
No, not past the two feet. Let me, let me go back to some visuals, maybe.
Okay.
Try and describe what we think, because we had a few situations. So, so in this instance, it's not a great example, because it looks like the, oh, give you another one. So this, this is an example, I mean, it technically, maybe it's a bad example as I look at it, but this area to the, to the left, on the left on the photo of the, the truck, is, you know, two feet of that arguably could be parked on, based on the new definition of a driveway, being two feet wider than the garage door. But the balance of that, where you can clearly see that it would appear they have been parking, would not be allowable as a parking surface.
Could, if they paved that, it still wouldn't be?
No, it would be. If they, if they bring that up to the hard surface definition, so compacted gravel, any of those surfaces, they could, they could do that. So this is another example. This would, would not be an acceptable situation, that's not, does not meet the definition of driveway, because neither of those surfaces are actually going toward, to an off-street parking space. Now, you know, the, the enforcement issue is, is never going to be perfectly clean, you know, is that material on the right, an adequate concrete surface? You know, there's, there's always going to be some gray area there, but clearly the area on the left, which doesn't meet the definition of driveway, and isn't an approved hard surface, would not be allowable. And again, here, you can't see the, the driveway, or you can't see the garage, but there's a garage door to the right of the, of the brick there, so that concrete, that whole concrete surface, even if it weren't concrete, could be used for the parking of vehicles, but the, the grass material that goes beyond that two feet, where that minivan is parked, would not be an acceptable parking location.
Other questions?
Ann? So I thought long and hard about how you were going to manage this, and to define what happened before August 31st and after August 31st. Is there intent to get satellite map of the city by August 31st and have that as your, as your line in the sand?
It's a good question, and, and we have very high quality through Dr. Cog aerial photography, that they did the whole region.
Okay.
April of last year, so we do have a very high quality existing data set of, of aerial photography that, that you can make determinations like this at a, at a fairly reasonable level.
Okay. A lawyer would say that April of last year and August of this year spans a lot of time that there, there's kind of wiggle room in there, and so I'm, I'm just asking, if, if I, as a homeowner, say that this was here before August 31st, and you show me an April of 2008 picture, and it's not there, what, what? I'm, I'm playing devil's advocate.
Sure, sure.
First of all, I strongly believe in this, so I'm not arguing the point, I just want to make sure it's truly enforceable. So I, I'm just proposing, if nothing else, that another set of satellite be procured, or, or something closer than April of last year, if possible, so.
Would it only, anything that had been built since April of last year, would it have fallen under requirement, a different requirement?
Doesn't, wouldn't require permits necessarily. Let me take a step back and, and I'm going to be kind of thinking out loud here, but the effect, the purpose, the primary purpose of the effective date of the ordinance is simply saying that you can't park on these unacceptable surfaces, which, when we look at the surfaces any date after August 31st, we're going to be able to tell whether it's an acceptable surface, right? So we don't need any aerial photography for that. I mean, if you're parking on weeds, if you're parking on compacted dirt or landscaping, it's got to go, unless it meets the definition of a driveway. And the definition of a driveway is leading into a garage, essentially, essentially, or another approved and properly improved off-street parking space, and that'll be readily apparent, because it either leads to a garage, or it leads to an off-street parking space that is properly improved.
Okay.
So to some extent, we won't need to rely heavily on that aerial photography.
Okay.
Other questions? All right, go ahead.
Yeah. Carports are acceptable parking structures, okay, even though they're not specifically mentioned in the... So, the vast majority of my neighbors will now be non-compliant. Because they have one-car garages or carports, they have a side yard, and, you know, they've been parking their vehicles on these side yards for years and years, and they have no crushed gravel or pavement or, or anything else. So, the city is going to notify these people, or they have to read it in the transcript, that their parking spaces are now non-compliant, and that the city is going to fine them for parking their vehicles after August 31st on spaces that they've parked their vehicles on for years and years? Is that the gist of how this is going to work?
Well, certainly we recognize that there's a need to get some public information out, and I don't envision that, you know, there's some, there's some glaring examples of, of things such as, you know, just parking a car in the middle of your yard, that might be cited early on, but I think, you know, the, the, there's a need for a public information campaign associated with this in terms of newsletter articles and whatever other means we identify, and be glad to hear ideas from the commission. But yes, I mean, the, this does have a real impact out there in the, in Wheat Ridge, in terms of, there's a number of sites that will be non-compliant.
And then, I wanted to ask you about the 25 feet of asphalt from, leading from the street. Is that the, is that hard surface, or is that actually asphalt, concrete? In other words, if I've got, say, a rock driveway that goes all the way down to the street, and then all the way up to the garage, is that compliant, or do I now have to go and asphalt the 25 feet from the street up towards my house?
It would be part of an, if it's part of an existing driveway, which I think is, is what you described, it would be grandfathered for whatever surface it is. But the, the standard moving forward will continue to be that the first 25 feet have to be asphalt or concrete, and then the balance of the driveway or parking areas can be this new definition of hard surface.
And, so if somebody comes to the city, say, they want to expand their garage, they've got a one-car garage, they want to expand it to a two-car garage, is that going to trigger a non-compliance at that point? Will they have to then asphalt that 25 feet that was not previously asphalted?
That's correct.
Okay. I, I, I mean, my whole neighborhood's non-compliant, my house is non-compliant probably, you know, if, if I go to expand my garage, my house is now non-compliant. Would any of my neighbors complain about it? No, because we're all in the exact same boat. So, for, for us, in that area, you know, this is going to be a pretty contentious issue if the city comes in and tells all of us for blocks and blocks, that, you know, we're all non-compliant because we bought a house built in the 50s that had a one-car driveway and perhaps no garage at all, and, you know, we want to do something like go to a second car garage or something like that. So it, it's going to be a big burden in, in parts of the, the city. I'm just, I'm not sure that, you know, I mean, it's a, it's a personal issue, so, you know, I'm not sure that I would, that I can actually get, I understand the, the reasoning, and, and completely agree with, obviously, a lot of the pictures you have, and people parking their cars in the middle of their lawns, but for whole neighborhoods that are non-compliant, it's, it seems to be a problem.
Ann?
Ken, can you go back to one of the pictures? I just want to clarify, and then I have a question, please. The one that they've boarded up the garage, or not boarded up, but that one. So ignoring the dirt on the side. Off on the far left, that used to be a garage. Because there's a hard surface there, that's acceptable, correct?
Correct.
Good, okay, because my neighbors is like that, everybody else's is like that, they've, they've taken advantage, and I'm like that, I filled mine in, but I pulled up the driveway. Here's the other question. When you find this trailer sitting here, do you notify the property owner, or do you notify the owner of the trailer?
I believe the property owner, but I can't say that for certain. The, the enforcement of this regulation currently is housed in the police department's community services team. We have a split in code enforcement between, code enforcement within my department and code enforcement within the police department. This particular item gets enforced by the police department, so I can't say for certain.
Okay. It would be nice, I didn't see a place in here where it would call for that, but it would be good internally to clarify who would get that. All the pictures that you showed, at least all of them that showed a house, the one, the truck sitting alone, I couldn't tell, these are all multifamily? So the chances are that the owner is not one of these in the multifamily in the duplex?
Right.
So, I just don't know who's going to get the summons or citation or whatever, the, the trailer or the property owner?
Right.
Okay. I, I think it's probably the property owner, if this is in the code and not in the motor vehicle, but if you could clarify that, that's all I have.
More questions before we open it for discussion? Steve?
Going back to, I have two questions. One is for new developments, going back to this 25-foot rule. If, if I were to build a new single-family home, and the garage is set back 40 feet from the property line, according to the current code, I'd only have to pave with 20, the first 25 feet, the remaining 15 feet up to the garage could potentially just be gravel or something like that, is that correct?
That's correct.
I don't necessarily like that, I don't know if any other commissioners have a feel about that, especially for new development, but I'll defer to the consensus on that. My other question is for agricultural properties under this proposed ordinance, right? If you have a single-family home on, on five acres in agricultural, would this not allow, would this not allow a tractor or similar type of agricultural equipment to park on grass, I guess, or their field without, would that meet the intent of this, or would that be a violation?
I'm, I'm pretty sure the intent is that this would not apply to the, to agriculturally-zoned properties. I'll look, I can look through it again to make sure, but...
Agricultural zone properties are agricultural vehicles?
Yes.
Yeah, right, yes.
Yes.
Well, because there might be, you're right, there might be some, some properties in the city that, that may not, that may be zoned agriculturally, that maybe we want this to apply to, it's just, we just needed to find that perhaps, or look closer a little bit to see what's going on with that.
Well, the motion says blah, 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 code of laws concerning residential off-street parking surface require, surfacing requirement.
I know that the ordinance we just looked at did, did kind of exempt agricultural properties specifically from that 25-foot hard surfacing requirement, but I didn't see that same exemption in this one.
I think it's just that that language is not repeated in this, because we, we limited this, this ordinance to the, the pertinent language that we were amending, we didn't show the whole section. So the language you saw in the previous ordinance that you recommended approval of will still be in place.
So you're saying you think this is not, does not apply?
Does not apply to agriculture.
Well, wait a minute, section 26 dash 501, off-street parking requirement, for sentence, scope in all zoning districts.
Now, we also may have some properties in the city that are zoned agricultural, that in fact don't have agricultural operations, and they just are ineffectively zoned, and they are a problem, children, but, I mean, so maybe they need to be under the guise of it, but I don't think we want to penalize legitimate agricultural operations from parking on the crops.
Mr. Hollander, the, the section you just read is the scope section, and that's just, that applies to all of section 501, which is all the parking regulations, but we haven't, in, in this ordinance, we haven't shown the full scope of that, so the exemption for agricultural is in a section that's not shown.
Okay. More comments and questions? I have, I have, we just really, I guess just one now, now that I think about all the ones that other people brought up, and that is, when you talk about this with respect to the recreational vehicle section of the code, you discuss that there was language that related to gravel driveway or gravel surfaces having edgers? And I was wondering whether any thought was given to, and why, if so, why it was not thought necessary for this section? If I heard you right, I don't claim to know the code. Did I miss it? I looked for it.
Again, I think, and I apologize, that this does not include everything, which is part of the difficulty. So the requirement, the requirement for, for hard surfaces that exists, and the language that applies to both RV parking, and now the new definition for residential off-street parking, included, already included the language in both sections requiring the containment of those materials. The problem was, in, in this section, that's being modified by this ordinance, it didn't define hard surface. In the RV section of the ordinance, it did, but it was specific to RVs. It was, the language was not worded in such a way that the, that definition could be applied to the general residential off-street parking requirement. Is that thoroughly confusing?
No, actually, I think I understood what you said, and I'm going to take it at faith, you're, you're right, you just, I think you just put my gravel parking area in the non-compliance, I was complying up until I realized that, that during there.
Your driveway's gravel, and it's heading towards the garage, though.
Actually, I built an area that doesn't comply, and now I'm going to have to edge it or get rid of it, but, I created a non-compliance here last year, so. I probably didn't have a permit, did I need a permit? To create a non-compliance?
Didn't need a permit.
I'm not sure.
Can you prove it was before August 31st?
Okay, I, I think I, I have enough to know how I feel, so I guess I'd like to open it to general discussion, or I guess technically, that's the end of the public hearings, and then it's open to discussion among the commissioners, as to how they feel about this ordinance as a whole. And I'd like John to start, because I have a feeling he has an opinion.
Well, you know, the intent of the ordinance, I can, I can back. And, you know, it's, it's greatly overused, but I, I have that feeling like, well, I, I know what's a bad parking surface. I can't define it, but I know it when I see it. And to me, the ordinance creates an undue burden on property owners in where entire neighborhoods are non-compliant or will become non-compliant if this passes. So although I'm sure I'm tilting at windmills here, I am not going to support the ordinance as it's currently written, and I'm not exactly sure. I'm trying to think of how I would amend it so that I would support it. But the way it currently is, I won't support it.
Anybody else want to speak on that?
Can I just get one more definition? What do you define as a vehicle?
I can look for that definition.
Okay. Does it include trailers?
Yes.
Okay. And it includes all manner of wheeled vehi, wheeled big vehicles?
Yes.
Does it include snowmobiles?
On trailers.
Snowmobiles?
I don't know that it would include snowmobiles. I think, yeah, it does. It's motorized, self-motorized vehicle.
Oh, okay.
Any motorized, okay. Okay. I just, I realized that when I was reading through this, it has a definition of residential driveway, it has a definition of hard surface, and I didn't see a reference to vehicle definition somewhere else in the code. So I just had to ask.
Does it have to be licensed to be a vehicle?
Sorry.
Bicycle.
Let me look and see if I can find the definition.
Thanks.
While he's, while he's doing that, would anybody like to weigh in on the concept of, and, oh, yeah, Jim?
After looking at these photos of dirt parking lots, I don't think it's onerous to ask someone to excavate a few inches and put in some crushed rock as a minimum to, to facilitate parking. I don't think that's onerous at all. And I don't think it's expensive or it's backbreaking, but it's not expensive or an undue burden for long-term parking.
I, I hear Commissioner Dwyer's concerns. My concern actually is unequal enforcement of this ordinance throughout the city, that it will be enforced in certain areas and it will not be enforced in other areas. You know, I, I think there's plenty of room to have some problems with this ordinance.
So would you suggest that there are portions of the city where it is and portions of cities that it's not appropriate in?
I just think the enforcement has got to be uniform.
Henry, Steve, anybody?
I will say, you know, I'm not living in a property that's directly impacted by this, but my first reaction when I read this was, I was kind of taken aback about infringing on property rights. Then I had a long discussion with my wife, who, who kind of educated me on some of these types of things, and there is a movement in the city to improve the city, and this is all part of that movement, I guess. And I guess I came in here kind of supportive, and the more I hear from you guys, I'm, I'm kind of on the fence again.
Steve?
Talk to me some more.
Well, again, I appreciate Commissioner Dwyer's stance tonight. One of the good things about our community is that it just, I mean, in general, it has such a wide variety of neighborhoods. This ordinance won't necessarily impact my immediate vicinity either, but I think that long-term, I think that the benefits of the community have to be weighed against the individual property rights. And I think some of the issues dealing with, with tracking onto the streets and with potentially oil and other fluids leaking into the ground, long-term environmental sustainability issues as well, I think that the pros, for me, outweigh the, the cons of additional cost and, and regulation. And so personally, for me, I will support this, this ordinance.
I'm going to support it. I, I believe in the intent of it. I believe it's, it needs to be equally carefully applied across. I can see where District 1 and District 2 are going to get hammered compared to some other areas, some other less old areas, newer areas. So, but I, I'm going to support it as long as I have an understanding what a vehicle is.
I'll support it.
We, we don't define it specifically, except in language that's embedded in the scope section. So it's, it's simply the scope, as Commissioner Hollander mentioned, in all zoning districts, off-street parking facilities for the parking or storage of self-propelled motor vehicles and/or licensed trailers.
So it does include tractors and agricultural vehicles?
It would, with the caveat that on agriculturally-zoned properties, there are different provisions in terms of some of the driveway requirements.
I'll, I have to admit that I'm actually conflicted on this because I, I really struggle when somebody tells me what to do on my own property. But the truth is that, that I think it's a problem that has to be addressed somehow. You know, I would actually, would in fact almost argue that there are places in the city where maybe some differential standard doesn't necessarily follow with the zoning districts or whatever. But I, I don't think that's practical to start going down that road. I think we need the same way to address this. And frankly, I think my own little piece of non-compliance looks pretty crappy, and my neighbors shouldn't have to put up with it. So I'm going to vote for the ordinance as well. So I, unless there's more comments, I'm open to accept the motion.
I move to recommend approval of Council Bill 21-2009, an ordinance amending Section 26-501 of the Wheat Ridge Code of Laws Concerning Residential Off-Street Parking Surface Requirements for the following reasons. The parking of vehicles on unimproved surfaces, including yards, landscaped areas, and compacted dirt in residential districts, has a negative effect on the community image and property values. Two, the parking of vehicles on said unimproved surfaces can also lead to tracking of dirt and mud onto public streets, resulting in potential damage to the street, cleanup costs for the city, and a decrease in storm water quality, or storm runoff water quality. Three, the proposed ordinance defines a reasonable off-street parking service requirement for all existing residential development within the city.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Roll call of the members.
And that motion passes with Commissioner Dwyer voting opposed.
Thank you. Do, does anybody have any other issues they'd like to bring up this evening?
I have just one general comment. I was looking at the new monument sign at the corner of Kipling and Interstate 70, and I was hoping that monument sign would give us an opportunity to have a zero-scape demonstration project, and it has turned into a monument to bluegrass, and I'm really disappointed that we didn't take that opportunity to have a zero-scape demonstration project there.
I, I just wanted to mention that Henry and I went to the most recent Dr. Cog meetings, and I left my notes in the car, so I'll bring them next time. But they proposed, Ken, that they could come and do a presentation on public safety and planning, how, how they intertwine, and it was an excellent presentation, and I have the, the speakers. But they said that they could give it to small groups, large groups, they've been, it's a roadshow per se, and they can, they've actually, were taking, you could, could vote with the little cards on, on your, your feelings about certain things. But it was an excellent education piece on, on public safety and how it affects planning. So, yeah. I, I'll, I'll bring it in next time, and I'll give you the names. It was good. Thank you. Thanks for that opportunity.
Anyone else? I had one. Ken, are you having any luck? Are you getting more staff or are you replacing?
We are. We, in the department, we have two vacant positions that we're in the process of filling right now. We, we had a planner two position, Jeff Hurt, which you all know, and that position is closed. We've been through interviews, and we have three finalists that we're hoping to make an offer on in a matter of days to, to a sole finalist.
So you have somebody to throw up here for us to torture next time?
Exactly.
Well, good for you.
We hope to put someone directly on this zoning code project from day one, so to keep it all moving forward. And then we also have a plans, a combination, plans examiner and a building inspector position in our, in our building division that we're in the process of filling as well, so.
Good. All right. That was all I had. If there's nothing else, I guess I'll adjourn, adjourn the meeting. We have to vote. Oh, I can't do that by my...
I move for a chair. Second.
I knew that.